Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have myself, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District. See Councilman Burnett of the 8th District, Councilman Cohen of the 1st District, Councilman Glover of the 13th District. That's it, Councilman Costello of the 11th District, Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District. Did not see Councilwoman Ramos, she may be running a little bit late. I don't see any other council members on the call. If you are here, there are a lot of folks here, please do speak up and I'll make sure to acknowledge you. Members from the Office of the President, I see Nikki Thompson on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Matt Stegman. And Erin Graffrey. Representing the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mihiu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Nina Themelis. Think Nina's running a little bit late. Okay, so this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0040R. Informational Hearing, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. For the purpose of inviting the Director in Department of Planning, the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, the Commissioner of the Baltimore City Health Department, the Commissioner of the Baltimore City Police Department, the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works, the Director of Department of Transportation, the Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, the State's Attorney of Baltimore City, the Sheriff of Baltimore City, the Chief of the Baltimore City School Police, the Director of the Department of General Services, the Director of the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Director of Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss ways that the city can prevent crime through concepts utilized and the crime prevention through environmental design model. This bill was introduced on April 19th, 2021, and it was sponsored by myself, Councilman Mark Conway. And, you know, I want to sort of start off this hearing repeating a familiar refrain that I think we all have heard in some way, shape, or form in our time here in the city, and that's that Baltimore isn't what it used to be. And that folks worry that their neighborhoods aren't what they used to be. Now, we all know that we've seen violence increase sharply in the past couple of years. And we all know that our city has seen a decline in population in many parts of the city. We also know that some of our commercial areas, excuse me, commercial areas have struggled to attract customers and foot traffic. Now, this is not to lay out some sort of doomsday scenario for Baltimore. We have many people that are proud and love our city, and we have many businesses that are doing incredibly well. But I think we can all agree that there is significant room for improvement and that there are better days ahead of us if we can do the right things. Now, when I look at the history of our city, you know, photos of Baltimore, when I look at old photos of York Road and, you know, old photos of the bustling Royal Theater and Lexington Market, what we see are people outdoors claiming space, you know, taking up space and doing so safely and happily. These spaces were built to accommodate prosperous neighborhoods and thriving businesses. Crime prevention through environmental design is a concept that is that aims to recognize the ability of our environments to shape and improve public safety. It emphasizes the use and look of buildings in public areas such as lighting and trees and trashcans, neighborhood art and beautification efforts. But mostly, these things also have a part in crime fighting as well. I'm glad to have here today Greg Seville, who is both a criminologist and an urban planner who specializes in the SEPTED methodology. And I look forward to hearing from him as we talk to our agencies. I'm also really happy to have here several agencies joining us, including the Mayor's Offices of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Department of Planning, Department of Transportation, Public Works, and otherwise. Monty is recognizing how these pieces fit together in the Mayor's Violence Prevention Plan. And I'm hopeful that we can continue to think through how we can leverage this path in our effort to improve the safety within our city. So with that, I want to open the floor to our agencies. Please state your name when I call out the agency. First up, we've got the Department of Planning.
Chairman Conway, this is Cheryl Kishani.
Thank you.
I'm the Director of Community Planning and Revitalization. Are you going to do all introductions, or do you want me to speak on behalf of planning to start the conversation?
Sure, if you could speak on behalf of planning. And I'd like to keep it brief. I want to make sure we get through each of the agencies. Five or so minutes, I think, would be sufficient, given we have plenty to get through. And at the end, I'd like to have an opportunity for Greg Seville to talk a little bit about the SEPTED methodology.
Okay, so I will start. We submitted our letter and I it's all community planners in their formal planning are trained in the SEPTED principles. And just as a reminder, the key SEPTED principles are natural surveillance, access control, territorial reinforcement, and space management. Sometimes they're referred to in different ways, but those are sort of four ways of thinking about physical space. And we have a design planning department. We only have one person working in that area now, but we're expanding that so that we have people on staff who can help with some of the graphic work in our in design work with our, work with communities. So the planners are all trained in it. We use our we also use our equity analysis and the allocation of capital dollars, so we we want to make sure dollars are allocated in a way that for neighborhoods that need this kind of help through agency requests that they can, they can get it. The other thing we said in our letter is that we can also help connect agencies, design staff with training and other educational resources. We recently did that for our own staff, for all the community planners. We invited in Carol Gilbert, who's a former Director of the Neighborhood Design Center. And they, in their late, mid to late 90s, developed a manual that was widely used in training communities on these principles. It was their manual entitled Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And they, there was defensible space. There was the defensible space manual focused on the SEPTED principles. Communities have used that a lot. I don't know if Neighborhood Design Center still does those trainings, but the manual is still available. But we paired our conversation with Carol Gilbert, with Professor at Coppin State, Dr. Johnny Rice. And we allowed them to talk to us about the current trends in SEPTED and then had a very interactive discussion with all the community planners focused on the issues of public safety, greening, site plan review, and neighborhood business districts. Those were some of the key questions that planners were interested in. And specifically, I asked one of our community planners how they had specifically used some of SEPTED principles recently. And our Green Network Coordinator, Kim Knox, has worked closely with Dr. Rice from Coppin on work that she's done both at the development of Cab Calloway Legends, Legends Park in Druid Heights and in work on Rachel Wilson Memorial Playground in Boyd Booth in southwest Baltimore. So it is safe to say that the Planning Department not only actively uses the SEPTED principles, but as recently as late May, have done a professional development session for our staff to make sure that everybody was sort of up to date on current trends and practices. That's, that's, that's what I have for planning.
Thank you, Cheryl. And because we have so many people here, I want to make sure I open the floor to questions from the committee. Should folks have any particular questions from each agency? We got a pretty long list here. I'll open it up to one question so that we can be quick. So any questions from the committee for the Planning Department before we move on? I see Councilwoman Porter and then.
Yes.
So afterward.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Kasani.
You can call me Cheryl.
Okay, Cheryl. Kashiati, I'm so sorry. People pronounce my name, so I always try to give deference pronouncing the people's names. But Cheryl, I did have a quick question related to the Department of Planning, particularly with the environmental design. Given that you all know this is an issue, how have you all kind of worked with the zoning, zoning department to rectify or remedy some of the redlining issues that we are seeing in Baltimore City? Just the concentrated poverty, the concentration of corner stores and things of that nature?
I will say that I honestly don't know. I will ask that specifically to the staff that works works more directly with the zoning than I do. But my understanding of the application of the SEPTED principles, and I think you're raising an interesting question, is less about land use decisions and more about the design of a particular land use. You know what I mean? So it's not like, it's not like, oh, how can we use SEPTED to prevent it from being more of something we don't want? It's more about if there's something that's in, whether it's an open space, a building with, with side alleys. How do we, in the police department's letter that I read of their letter of support, referenced a project that they're working on with housing and planning, which is a very good example of a natural surveillance and access that the you know, so that I was glad to see that they put that example in there. But if you note in that, it doesn't, it doesn't say that we want to do something to the business that's adjacent. It's working, it's working with the business who owns some of the land that we want to clear. It's working with that business to make it a more defensible space. So I, without even asking them, I can go out on a limb here and say that we've not worked closely with zoning on that. I think it's, it's not directly related and that there are other issues that we need to explore with how to address liquor stores, group homes.
Exactly. And you hit the nail.
SEPTED's not really the, that's the wrong set of tools, I think, for what, for what, for what you're talking about.
Yeah, and the reason why I bring it up is because, I mean, you hit the nail right on the head. I realize that SEPTED is not the proper tools to use for that respect. But what I'm calling on is the integration of multiple tools to remedy some of the issues that we know are existing within our communities related to zoning, related to business licenses, related to lack of green space, lack of parks, and things of that nature. So I'm hopeful that the Planning Department will use every tool at their disposal, not just in silo, but in an integrated, in an integrated way to, to address some of these issues that I believe Mr. Chair is kind of like heightening with the intent of this particular legislation. So.
Duly noted. And again, kudos and a shout out to the Police Department for the work they've done on Rob Street with us, with us and housing and transportation. It's a model for how we can work together on this kind of stuff.
Thank you. I'm going to let Councilwoman Ramos ask her question. I think in the interest of time, we might just move through the agencies' reports first before we get to questions, just because we do have three hearings today. So let you ask your question, then let's just get through the agency reports.
Sure. Those of us who've been working in community development for a long time probably remember when SEPTED, when, when Carol Gilbert actually did that handbook and then did workshops across the city about, you know, what it was and how to do this. And I was wondering if the Planning Department was thinking about doing that again as a way to, to sort of refresh our memories as to, you know, what that is. I mean, it's, it's lighting on our playgrounds. It's, you know, those kinds of things that, you know, I know the planning has that sort of lens, as you just said, but communities, we need to be reminded. So is there going to, is there anywhere in the process where we might be able to do that, or if we can be trained to be able to get stuff, you know, that kind of thing out to our communities as well? So what, is there a plan in place? Again, this happened.
Councilwoman Ramos, I think you, you both, you know that this is where we miss a CPA, because this is, you would hand that handbook to CPA and they would consume it. So what I would say to you is, why don't you, the answer is no, it's not on my list of things to do. It probably wouldn't be hard to get it on my list of things to do. But with our, both of our community development hats on, if you want to reach out to me and we can pull a couple people into a room, maybe the current head of NDC, and talk about what we would need to do, because the Planning Department could do this. I think this is a really good idea. Somebody should do it, because when NDC was doing those workshops, this information, along with the Police Department, along with CPA, along with the Community Law Center, this information was widely available to people and it hasn't been done for years. So if you want to reach out to me and we can collaborate on this, the City Council could, this would be a great thing to do, a great thing to do.
I think it would be helpful, and since this is Mr. Chair's bill, you know, certainly would defer to him, but if that's something that you want, moving forward, Mr. Chair, I mean, I'm happy to work on it.
So the way I would hope goes, I kind of want to make sure we get through the agency reports and we have Greg Seville on the line. Greg Seville is an expert on this. He actually trained me on this. I don't know if he remembers that. Back when we were doing work in Picktown. So I think having Greg have an opportunity, once the agencies have confirmed their reports, to walk through the SEPTED methodology, how it works and what it tries to accomplish. I think it'll be helpful for setting the stage, and then I think we can go back and begin asking questions of the agencies about how they're using those, those, those tools and how we're working along with the time fight. So let's do that. Let's just get through the agency reports. I know Greg is chomping at the bit to, to tell us more about SEPTED, so we can make sure we get this thing right. So I'll move on to the Fire Department.
Mr. Chair and members, Fire Department, we stand by our comments on the bill and we have no objections. However, we, we do look forward to learning more about this methodology and quite frankly, any way we can assist the city in making, making a difference in dealing with environmental issues and crime.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Victor Vla. We're going to stand by our report and are prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Victor. The Health Department?
Yes, good, yes, good, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. We stand by our report at the Health Department and would answer any questions formally through a response that we would pull together at the Health Department. But we do support this bill and, and again, we'll answer any questions that are posed and get back with the council and the committee.
Thank you. Next, we've got the Police Department.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. It's Colonel Worley. We stand by our report and support the bill. The Rob Street is a great example of how it worked as a team effort when everybody worked together for one goal. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. So just for the record, so you heard from Colonel Worley from the BPD. This is Michelle Wirthsberg. I'm the Director of Government Affairs. Just want to give a quick shout out to Cheryl Kishani and just a shout out to CPA and what a difference it would make if it was still, still in existence. So, but Mr. Chairman, we absolutely are here for, to answer any questions that you may have about any of the projects that we're working on and the ways that we're trying to coordinate with, with the other agencies.
Thank you. And we're going to follow up a little bit about the, the Rob Street corridor and that, that project. I do have some questions about it and how we can learn from it. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement.
Chair Conway, this is Nick Wilson from ONZ. Would it be possible to have us go a little bit later? Director Jackson was really looking forward to it, and she's just wrapping up a previous meeting.
Yeah, sure. I'll circle back to you guys on the back end. Next up, we've got to the Baltimore City Public School System.
Good afternoon, Lynette Washington. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for and I will say that we also support the bill. We've been using SEPTED in our designs, our 20th Century Buildings, and also with our existing spaces. So we also stand by our report, and if you have any additional questions or follow up, we can respond.
Thank you, Lynette. Next, we've got the Department of General Services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Department of General Services stands by the report, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have about the matter.
Thank you. Next, we've got the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm Alice Kennedy, Acting Commissioner for the DHCD. I'm joined here today by Deputy Commissioner Eric Booker, Deputy Commissioner Jason Hessler, Legislative Liaison Stephanie Murdock. We stand by our bill report in support of this resolution to discuss crime prevention through environmental design. DHCD plays an active role in improving public safety by enforcing the Building and Sanitation Codes, by providing grants to organizations to support community development, creating partnerships with residents to create clean, safe spaces, and also working across agencies to deliver timely results to citizen complaints and also come up with creative solutions and SEPTED solutions, as mentioned earlier, around Rob Street as an example. For the purpose of this hearing, I just wanted to highlight a few examples of some of the DHCD activities that support SEPTED principles. Principle one, and this is, you know, in the wording that we're utilizing, is that principle image maintenance and focusing on the neighborhood sense of pride of place. You know, the more disinvested an area, the more likely it is to attract unwanted activities. An example I'd like to highlight is a community-led project with, that had financial support from DHCD as well as many different financial contributors, which was the Central West Gateway Project, which is a really good example of this in the Heritage Crossing community. We just celebrated the ribbon cutting for that a couple of weekends ago. And it's part of a holistic set of reinvestment efforts around homeownership retention, reduction of crime, grime, and blight in the Heritage Crossing community. And we're continuing to support community-led SEPTED projects, which might not, you know, I don't know that Janet Allen, who is the president of Heritage Crossing, was thinking necessarily and would have used that SEPTED acronym when she was thinking about what was needed in her community and creating this gateway and shifting how the community interacts with people on that corner of MLK. That wasn't in her mindset probably in terms of using those acronyms and, and being able to clearly identify some of those key principles. But it is at the core of a lot of the community work that we do. And the principles are being utilized, even though if they don't align with exact terminology in these spaces. Another principle, natural surveillance, you know, that's putting more eyes on potential crime areas, removing obstructions. You know, things where preventing access to areas. Our code enforcement inspectors and the team under Deputy Booker regularly support this principle by conducting both proactive inspections, responding to 311 requests for services. We also respond with ShotSpotter and have a special ops team that responds to areas post acts of violence or shootings that have occurred to assess the natural environment, the built environment, and to see where we can do some enforcement and eyes on the ground as it relates to DPW. Territorial reinforcement as well. This DHCD's Adopt-A-Lot program would be a part of this. You know, allowing communities to naturally preserve and protect a territory that they feel is their own and working with our other partners at Planning and so forth on the Great Network Plan and a community-based green space and so forth. Natural access control, you know, that relies on the physical elements to keep unauthorized persons out of a particular place. You know, our housing inspectors make referrals to DPW on a regular basis for cleaning, cutting and boarding of vacant properties. You know, addressing those community nuisances, lessening the chance for environmental conditions to invite crime. And we also employ and deploy, we don't employ, but we deploy the 69 cameras throughout the city to try to catch illegal dumpers who also create unsafe conditions that can also invite additional crime. Additional crime. In closing, I just want to say that our current operations align with the Mayor's Violence Prevention Plan and crime prevention through environmental design, SEPTED strategies and principles. DHCD is committed to working with Director Jackson and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement to enhance and expand and continue to align our efforts. And we stand by our bill report in support of the passage of this resolution and are able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. That was really insightful and helpful. Next, we've got up the, we've got the State's Attorney's Office up next. All right, I don't know if we have someone on the line. If so, feel free to speak up at a later date, later on. Next up, we've got the Housing Authority of Baltimore City.
Good afternoon, Chair Conway and other members of the committee. I'm Janine Dunn on behalf of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our report in support of this bill and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Janine. The Mayor's Office of Innovation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan Heinowitz from the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation. OPI stands by its report it submitted and looks forward to discussing and answering any questions that, that you may have.
Thank you, Dan. The Department of Recreation and Parks.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway. I'm Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Recreation and Parks, and I'm joined by my colleagues Adam Horman, Chief of Capital Development, Charlie Murphy from Forestry, and Dan Carpenter, the Chief of Programming for Recreation. Our report is not posted, so I'll brief part of it to you. The best practices within Recreation and Parks community address SEPTED as a matter of course through recreation and programming, park maintenance practices within forestry, and through equitable and thoughtful capital investment. Youth who participate in extracurricular activities have higher self-esteem, greater academic achievement, and lower incidences of delinquency. Participation within quality-structured programming and recreation centers dramatically decrease problem behaviors and juvenile delinquency. Data from the National Recreation and Parks Association has also shown that students who reported spending no time in after-school extracurricular activities were 57% more likely to drop out of high school, 49% more likely to use drugs, and 27% more likely to have been arrested than students who spend as much as four hours in structured activities. Forestry has long advocated for this type of resolution, and one of Tree Baltimore's major talking points for increasing tree canopy has been the relationship between the tree canopy and crime rates across an herbal rural gradient in the greater Baltimore region. We have a report posted that you can reference. A city history of disinvestment based on race and income have contributed to crime and deteriorating infrastructure in Baltimore's underserved community. BCRP's capital development and planning is tasked with the planning, design, and implementation of the capital improvement program and evaluates the citywide distribution of capital fund each year through equity analysis. Our current design approach, which includes extensive community outreach and design for the genius of place inherently addresses the social cohesion, threshold capacity, and community culture concepts within SEPTED. Furthermore, the creation of the new multimodal trails between our parks is sought to address the connectivity concept. Whereas our design efforts to this point have not explicitly followed SEPTED, we have essentially done so with a focus on sound urban design and planning. If you have any questions, all of our staff are available when you get to us.
Thank you, Janine. And last but not least, we have the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chair, Liam Davis, Department of Transportation. I do not see the director on now. He might have had something come up, but DOT definitely stands by our bill report. You know, we see, you know, we kind of see the value here and the connection here in a number of ways. You know, obviously with our streetlights operating under our maintenance division, that's an important, you know, crime prevention tool, making sure our streets and footways are well lit. And also looking more long-term, harkening back, Mr. Chair, to your, you know, your vision of the historic photos of York Road Corridor and some of these other historic business districts across the city. That aligns with what we're trying to do with complete streets. Trying to make these, these corridors that kind of had been sacrificed for the, you know, a lot of automobile capacity, kind of bringing back some of that capacity, giving it to pedestrians. And, you know, that, that also aligns. More feet on the street generally means less crime. So we're, we have some maps that, you know, we've, we've put together ahead of today's hearing. I don't know if you'd like to take a, us to take a look at those, but we, we stand ready to have the conversation. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Liam. And I want to go back. Awesome. Thank you so much, Liam. And I want to go back to Monty. I know Director Jackson may have a little bit to add.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Council members, thanks for your patience as I had a meeting wrapping up. I will say that the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement appreciates the opportunity to discuss the city's current and future efforts as it relates to SEPTED. We do consider this a public health approach to preventing violence and its important component of the Violence Prevention Plan that the mayor released on the 23rd of July. I would say that where we focus most intently in the Violence Prevention Plan on this work is in Pillar Two when we talk about inter-agency coordination efforts. I don't think that it can be overstated that there's a direct connection between blighted properties and crime rates. We know that. We know that the legacy of structural and institutionalized racism here in Baltimore City, along with us being one of the most hyper segregated cities in this country due to redlining, has a lot, if not everything, to do with what we're seeing in our city. By way of research, we've really been digging deeply and have been for some time now to inform the plan associated with what the place-based interventions needed to be in order for us to make sure that we were paying attention to all of the components that lead to violence in our communities. And both public health and criminology research show us that cleaning, upgrading, improving lighting and blight, lead abatement, demolishing and securing vacant buildings reduce violence and they improve quality of life for our residents. We know that folks who are typically engaged in criminal activity usually use vacants or unmaintained lots for grass to store paraphernalia and their weapons. And we want to make sure that that's something that we mitigate and eventually totally eliminate here in Baltimore City. We took a look at a study in Philadelphia and found that between 1999 and 2008, they greened 4,436 vacant lots over 7.8 million square feet. And an evaluation of a comparison of the green lots with a control group of 13,308 vacant lots found that the greening vacants was associated with a 15% reduction in assaults and an 8% reduction in gun assaults in Philadelphia. And so I would say that, and that's just one example, we know that making sure that we've got SEPTED practices in place, that we employ the methodology is one that is proven. So let's talk about how specifically in the Violence Prevention Plan we account for that. We do that in a few ways. After we or during the community conversations that we were having with folks, they were very clear, and they continue to be very clear, that their environment contributes to what the violence looks like. As recently as today, I'm happy to say that I was able to connect Nika Namdi directly to Deputy Mayor Ted Carter. Nika Namdi runs Fight Blight Baltimore, which we know is a community-driven intervention associated with getting rid of blighted and disinvested spaces in our communities. We also know that the Coordinated Neighborhood Stabilization Response, which is a part of the Violence Prevention Plan, accounts for making sure that all of the agencies are a part of a stabilization response when we see traumatic events happen in communities where we're doing environmental assessments and scans. The Neighborhood Policing Plan pilots that we're working on right now involve seven city agencies working with both the Western and the Southern districts, specifically DHTD, DPW, DOT, Baltimore City, Rexon Parks, B-SIT, Monty, and BPD are having conversations about what creating neighborhood policing plans should look like and what the environmental factors are for making sure that we're able to turn ownership back over to community members to own public safety in partnership with us. And then I think the final point that I'll make here revolves around the reentry action network. My office is currently in the process of negotiating a contract with the Department of Corrections and Public Safety at the state level to employ returning citizens who are eligible for work release and pre-release three months before they return home, to serve as crews for high grass and weeds maintenance, to serve as crews for beautification and landscaping of our communities. But I think that the most beautiful part about the work that they're going to be doing is that for those who are eligible while they're behind the wall, we're also going to be signing them up for civil service so that they come out and immediately become eligible to fill those many vacant slots that we have in those agencies, because some of them are getting certifications while they're behind the wall. And we've got to put our investment where our mouths are and really proud to be a part of that work. I stand ready to continue to partner with the rest of the agencies that have given their testimony and anyone else that wants to come to the table. The table's expandable. It's one of those ones with the leaves in it, the multiple leaves in it. So I invite everyone to help us do this work together. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Jackson. That sounds awesome, the work you guys are doing. I did forget the Department of Public Works, so I want to make sure I extend an opportunity for the Department of Public Works to report out.
Good afternoon, Chair Conway and members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. For those who don't know, I'm Director Jason Mitchell of the Department of Public Works. First, thank you all for providing me to this hearing to discuss the all-important topic of violence prevention in ways in which we can all work together to reduce opportunities for crime and violence in our neighborhoods. The mayor, as you know, recently released a Comprehensive Violence Prevention Framework and Plan. That plan is based on equity, healing, and trauma-informed practices. It is my understanding that this committee was looking for specific information from us, DPW, concerning blight, improper waste disposal, illegal dumping, as contributing factors to violence and crime, and how we coordinate with the police department and other agencies to address these issues, similar to some of the comments that Ms. Jackson just made. I do have a map to share. Don't know if we can share it, but we did have a map that we can display later at the hearing. Really where, you know, a lot of our service requests are coming from in the city related to high grass, weeds, dirty alleys, dirty streets, corner cans, SIU cleanup, and legal dumping, so that we can also see where we're doing a lot of our work and which communities we're doing that work. In addition to that, every week DPW receives an environmental shooting, a report from the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation identifying all currently open service requests within 500 feet radius. Many homicides are shooting in Baltimore, and our crews respond to those. This report is used to call attention to the outstanding service requests and give them priority, and the attention is being paid in those areas and help to stabilize and prevent repeated events in the current vicinity. Police officers are also encouraged to use their department email to contact us so that we can report the issues as a priority and respond accordingly. In addition, Public Works coordinate with the Baltimore Police Department, the Housing and Community Development inspectors to clean and board vacant houses after squatters and has been removed. We are in the early phases of the Violence Prevention Plan, and I expect we'll have more collaborative strategies and approaches as we develop and the plan matures. I think it's important to note that the Mayor's Violence Prevention Framework and Plan underline emphasis always around health-based, trauma-informed approaches to equitable addressing, to equitably address community circumstances and community environments when determining crime prevention strategies. I want to thank you, Chair Conway, and committee members for your time today, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have my team here as well to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Thank you to each of the agencies for giving us a little bit of background on what you've been doing so far. We're going to, I'm going to turn over to Greg Seville, who is an expert on the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design idea. And, you know, really would, I think it's going to help us sort of set the stage. And for those that are not familiar with the principles of SEPTED or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, Greg can walk us through that and make sure that folks understand what we're trying to accomplish here, how it can be incredibly helpful toward looking at the safety concerns that we have in our city in a new light, or maybe not a new light, because Greg's been doing this for a long time, but maybe looking at it again in a different way. So with that, I want to hand off to Greg.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? Great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Department Heads, and everybody else who's here at the discussion. Thanks. Yes, indeed. Mr. Chair, Mark Conway was one of my students five years ago in the Big Town neighborhood. He was one of our star students, so you should know he got an A grade for the class. So he's done a great job. I'm delighted to see this city of Baltimore taking this momentum forward into actual legislation. I think it's a very progressive movement. I certainly applaud you. I've been listening to discussions from the various department heads and some of the feedback about violence prevention and some of the mayor's programs. It's very impressive. I think you're certainly on the right track. I was particularly engaged by the, some of the planning folks, talks, discussions about community workshops, which I think is one of the ways we proceed. So, you know, a pat on the back to you for doing that. And congratulations for coming this far. You are on the right track. There is ways to get derailed. There are obstacles, and I'm going to go into those in a second, but I just want to say, I think what you're doing is great. My exposure to Baltimore is many, many years ago. I'm criminologist by training, and I'm also an urban planner, and I'm a former police officer. So I've kind of put those together over the years. And I started reading early SEPTED in defensible space in 1978 and '79 when I was a student in urban geography and planning. I had a lot more hair then and had a lot less knowledge about what it meant to prevent crime using urban design. But within about five years, I was a police officer, and I was actually tasked with the job of doing SEPTED on actual neighborhood developments. And that was my first exposure to these concepts of using the physical environment to reduce crime opportunities, using things like natural surveillance and eyes on the street, what Jane Jacobs used to talk about in New York in the 60s, and territorial control, what architect Oscar Newman talked about in his book, Defensible Space, in 1972, and so on and so forth. And that was kind of the first sort of, you know, kick at the cat, if I can say it that way, to look at crime prevention, not using the traditional, you know, justice system and the court system and the prison system, but to try to head it off at the pass. One of the big problems, I'll tell you this right now upfront, one of the big problems with trying to prevent crime is that almost every program that I hear about, whether it's, and I, these are great programs, by the way. I'm not saying that they're not good programs, but almost every program that I hear about, and you think this through and yourself, is like the Violence Interrupter Program, the Ceasefire Program, the Neighborhood Watch Program, the Restored Justice Programs, and all that. Almost every one of those programs requires one thing that SEPTED does not require. They require a crime. They require an offender. They require something to have gone wrong in order to bring those programs forward. SEPTED doesn't require that. SEPTED is a fundamental philosophy about how you build neighborhoods before there's any crime. Now, there could be crime. You could go after the fact, retroactively address it through crime, better lighting, hedging, trimming, and all that kind of thing. But SEPTED is one of the first times in the history of prevention of crime. And I taught, I teach history of crime at universities and criminals departments. So I can tell you this from the reading that I've done over the last few decades, that this is a fundamentally unique program. Why it's not in every city in this nation is beyond me, but it isn't. However, it is in many cities, and it has had a fair bit of success. Okay, now, having preempted my comments with those philosophies, let me just say a couple of things. First of all, SEPTED, what it is, what it isn't. What SEPTED isn't, is it isn't just natural surveillance. It is natural, but it's not just that. It's not just blight removal, although blight removal is important. It's not just community pride, although community pride is important. But it is something that has evolved to be something quite different. And I say this because I want to let you know that in the late 70s, in late 90s, early SEPTED, what we've heard discussed in this meeting so far, and I haven't seen your bill, and I apologize for that, so I can't comment specifically about the bill. I'm happy to do so if you want, but at this point, I haven't seen it. However, what I will tell you, for most folks who think about SEPTED, who think they know SEPTED, think of the defensible space, they're speaking about what's now called first-generation SEPTED. First generation is the physical modification of environments to cut crime opportunities, lighting, hedging, that kind of thing. That's first-generation SEPTED. First-generation SEPTED ran into some troubles, some theoretical and some empirical research troubles back in the 80s and 90s. And as a result of those troubles, the, an organization was formed called the International SEPTED Association, the ICA. And so the ICA is a nonprofit. It's a professional international organization. It's non-affiliated. I was one of the founders, 25, they're celebrating 25 years this year, and I'm no longer on the board. I'm involved with the organization, but I no longer run it. But this organization has taken a whole different approach to SEPTED. And what it's done is it's moved the story forward. And in 1997, a number of people, myself included, did a lot of research and developed a new form of SEPTED called second-generation SEPTED. Mark, you may remember this, Mark classes. And second-generation SEPTED is kind of like the next form of how you go from just doing physical opportunity changes to doing some social changes, some motive reduction. It's no good to put eyes on the street if it's the wrong eyes. I did, I had some police officers I trained with did opportunity reduction and surveillance and lighting in a parking lot, hoping that the residents in the parking lot were going to surveil the parking lot to stop drug deals. And what happened was the drug dealing problems, violence problems got worse. And they got worse because some of the drug dealers were living in the apartments. And so they didn't pay attention to eyes on the street. They shouldn't have been paying attention to whose eyes were on the street. So second-generation SEPTED addressed that in 1997. And today, in the International SEPTED Association, we have two different forms of it. And four years ago, we created another one called third-generation SEPTED, which has to do with the modern evolution of the cognitive sciences and things like trauma-based research and the greening of communities and what's called the biophilic response in human beings and health and diet and things like that. That's now part of the story, too. So my advice to you in Baltimore, when you go forward, is be careful to get the most modern version of this story, the first, second, and third generation. Now, you can do that through many ways, through just educating yourself. I would strongly recommend you pay attention to the International SEPTED Association Certification Program. There's a lot of people teaching SEPTED now who frankly, in my view, and I'm biased, and I admit that, but frankly, in my view, they don't know what the heck they're talking about. They talk about cutting, you know, cutting trees down between three feet down and eight feet up and putting the sightlines through and throwing some lighting and hoping, crossing the fingers, it's just going to go better. They never evaluate after the fact, so it's not evidence-based. They are using what they think is proven and tried practices, but SEPTED never said, it never said just that good surveillance and good lighting is going to cut crime. You can have good lighting and still have crime. And the guy who wrote the book called Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design was a criminologist at Florida State University. I taught there, and I taught with him, and he was a colleague of mine, and his name is C.R. Jeffrey. And he used to write about this, and he'd say, why don't they understand that it's got to be about analyzing and diagnosing the problem first and then doing the prescription? It's not just going in and putting the lights in. It's diagnosing the problem first. It's the medical method. Diagnose first, then prescribe. So that would, that'd be a word of caution that I would offer up for you, is that make sure as you go forward, you bring in this broader moralistic picture of crime. So modern SEPTED, in fact, in our company, we didn't call it SEPTED. We called it Safe Growth, which is kind of like neighborhood planning using this as part of the modality. And in the Safe Growth model, it's not just about design. It's about capacity building inside neighborhoods, and that's what we're doing in Big Town, trying to get the neighborhood itself to learn how to do this. It is about land use balance, what Jane Jacobs talked about in the 60s, about how to do something we call threshold analysis, about how you do plan certain kinds of land uses within a certain size of an area. We measured that. So it is about zoning nowadays, as it never used to be. It's about cultural placemaking through fear mapping. So we actually do fear mapping in neighborhoods because police give you pictures of crime incidents and hotspots and crime, but that doesn't tell you the whole story. That's only a small tip of the iceberg. We need to know what the perceptions of residents are. If they're afraid to walk in the streets, if kids are afraid in schools to go into the outside yards for recess because they're afraid of bullying. If public housing residents are afraid to, you know, go to the gardens, then you're not going to get people activating the street. You're not going to get surveillance, because it doesn't matter what you do to the physical environment. If they're not on the streets, the streets are vacant. If the streets are vacant, it makes it easier for offenders to offend with impunity. So it's got to be about this business, about understanding the perceptions of residents, which is kind of the second and the third generation SEPTED. And we use things now called livability academies, where we help residents in the neighborhood to learn about this, to do projects on their own neighborhoods, and collaborate with city council. So the whole generations of modern holistic SEPTED are much different than they used to be. So I'll make that comment. And the last thing I'll leave you with before I turn over to questions is, and I want you to think about this really carefully, I want you to think about proceeding with caution. Proceed with caution. And I say that because I don't know that you're aware of this, but what's happened over the last number of years is poorly-trained SEPTED practitioners, and I'm not pointing to Baltimore. And I'm not pointing to Baltimore, by the way. This is a national sort of trend. Poorly trained SEPTED practitioners who haven't been, aren't using the holistic views, aren't doing their data analysis, aren't doing evidence-based strategies. And there are many out there who get this training. They just go in and they put, you know, dividers on benches so homeless folks can't sleep on the benches. Or they put walls up around certain neighborhoods and keep one group away from another group. And, and particularly in the racial, racially divided cities, this is a major problem. And so there has been a political backlash against that kind of early first generation SEPTED that is now called either defensive architecture or, or hostile architecture. Or the last term I heard in, let me see, I wrote it down here, Brian Lee's article in the Bloomberg City Lab, which is a planning journal. He wrote an article, "America's Cities Were Designed to Oppress," and they call it spatial anti-blackness. And so I, I, I work, I, I offer the caution to you when you do this is to make sure that however you proceed, A, you have people who are properly certified through the ICA, so they know about this. They're following the ICA's code of ethics, so we don't get into this. B, that you make sure you, you're as holistic as possible in how you craft your bill and how you follow up on this bill. And, and C, when you do this, make, and I strongly encourage this, is don't just train your staff, train your residents and collaborative staff. Like we did with the training that Mr. Chairman was, we had, everybody sat at the table. We had police from the Baltimore Police, who are terrific, by the way. We had, we had city residents. We had members of the community organization. We had some of the elders all at the same table doing that kind of SEPTED planning. That's the best way to proceed. Having said that, I'll leave it back to you, Mr. Chair, to, to ask questions or I'll field any questions that you want. So thanks very much, folks.
Thank you, Greg. And that was really, really, I think, helpful. Also as a refresher for me, I got an A, but I got a lot of As back in my day in which I could not go back in those classrooms to save my life. So it was really helpful to, to, to hear that explanation once again. I'm going to open the floor to questions from the committee. I have one of my own and it, it, it speaks to the first, second, and generation concept that you spoke to. It sounds like we are doing a lot of the first generation work that, that we're, we're doing that. And whether or not we're doing it well, I think is a matter for debate, but we, we are aware of the, the benefits of implementing some of those, those ideas. I, I also feel pretty confident that we are well on our way, if not already doing some great work around trauma. We have been very, very progressive and I think Councilman Cohen has done a significant amount of work on that regard. And we are continuing to spread that work. I'm really curious about the social change concept that you, you spoke about for the second generation of SEPTED. What that means and what that looks like and how that might look in a city like Baltimore.
Yeah, I could, I mean, when we did the training in, in Baltimore, in the Big Town area, that was a kind of a proof of concept to see whether or not the Safe Growth Model would actually work in Baltimore. And I think we've got some great projects out of it. The Taught Lot Project, which was renovated, they did great job, work there. And it kind of told us, yes, this model does work there. And we've done it about 20 cities. And, and, and what I will, what I will do for you is I'll point you to one of your neighboring cities on these coasts in Philadelphia. And there's a neighborhood in Philadelphia called the El Centro Neighborhood, which is near Kensington. And they have a group there called ASE, the Hispanic Association of Contractors and Enterprises, H A S E, ASE. And they have some Safe Growth trained practitioners who are working on the ground there. ASE has been doing some outstanding work to demonstrate exactly what this looks like on the ground. And, and in short, what it boils down to is there's a group in the community, in the neighborhood. This is, this is very much a smaller is beautiful sort of approach. So we don't look at the pictures. We look at the pixels. That's, that's what, how you prevent crime is you work bottom up, not top down. Now, there are top-down programs that work fine, Neighborhood Watch, for example, but that's not how we do it. We get much more bang for our buck by going small first and then working up. So they have a local organization. That's the first step is that the organization is collaborative. So it has city residents, local police officers, it has city officials, planning officials, and they participate in this. So they have that. Then what they do is they have a neighborhood-based safety plan. So in a city like Philadelphia, you could have, they have one, two neighborhoods now that they're doing it. We would like to see all 50. So that each neighborhood would have its own plan that's coordinated together. This is an era of cyber and electronics and computers. We can do this, but this is not impossible, not possible task. And so what happens is city, the delivery of city services becomes tied to the neighborhood plans, not the other way around. And, 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 and so, and so that's another way to implement the model. So you know, you notice I'm not talking about how you put more lighting in. I'm talking about the devils in the details about how it gets operated and how it gets operationalized, how it gets implemented. Implementation is the key. Failed implementation means failed SEPTED. And so we're, we've learned this lesson in Safe Growth. And then, and then the last thing they do in, in Philly, and this is, this is key, this would be key for you guys, and you don't do this in, in Baltimore right now to my knowledge, is they establish what are called livability academies. Taken from the old, back in the day, the police used to have something called the Police Citizens Academy. I don't know if they have one in Baltimore or not. But that was kind of like the early version of this. And what the livability academy is, is giving free classes to residents. Often you students and often seniors working together for the first time. Sometimes shop owners who sit down once a week, sometimes on a weekend for a couple of hours, and they learn the basics of civics. And by civics, I mean, can you, how do you do community investment? How do you get community inclusion, get folks engaged? How, how do you do SEPTED, for example? And they do a project and out of each class, each academy, every six months they run an academy, you get a group of 20, 30, 40, 50 people who are, who learn the, the basic elements of civic leadership, community leadership. And of them, those members select themselves to come and sit on these panels. And the panels administer these neighborhood plans and they administer this on an ongoing basis. And they're the ones who really build the, do the community engagement, the community building on a long, it's, and, and the key here is long-term. It's not just a one-off, one deal. We have one group in, in Holly Grove in New Orleans. They're in their, I think, 12th or 13th year. We have a group up in Toronto, Canada, where we did it during the 21st year. And in Philadelphia, they're in the seventh year. So my thing is how long does it last? I want to, I want to extend these neighborhood, high-level, high-functioning, community-capacity neighborhoods year after year after year, so we don't have to continually send cops back, back over and over and over. And the neighborhood is left with nothing but, you know, a homicide location. So I hope that answers your question.
Does. Thank you. I want to open the floor to questions from the committee. I'm sure there, there's some out there. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Seville. I, as I said earlier in the hearing, I was involved with the, obviously, the first generation of SEPTED back in the, you know, late 90s, early 2000s here in Baltimore, when, you know, it was really, you know, better lighting, et cetera, et cetera. I'm thrilled to hear that it has expanded just to basically what I've been talking about for a long time, which is if you get rid of vacancies and have stable housing and you work on the communities, you're going to prevent crime.
Yeah.
And so we do have, as you heard from Director Jackson, a violence prevention plan that is actually very focused on the people and the social piece, which is a good thing. Commissioner Kennedy, here's, we talk about this all the time because we're partners in trying to get more attention to the issues of needing to really work in our communities. We don't have much money to do the work that needs to be done in our communities. We also don't have, we have not in the past had as much emphasis on this as a crime prevention strategy, and it needs to be. So I wonder if you can tell me, with the cities that you've worked with before, it sounds like the projects that you've done really are, are, have been sort of ground-up kind of projects where you're working with communities. What I'm interested to know is that is, how does it look when a city makes this a priority? Is it looking like a, a bill that we all go and say we need to do this and then the budget is changed and prioritized in a different way? Does it look like, you know, what, what is it? And could you tell us some examples?
Yes, I can. That's a great question. And I, by the way, I love what you're talking about in terms of the social and so forth. I also love what I've heard in discussions so far about the trauma strategies. But, but please hear what I'm saying. Please, I beg you to listen to this, listen to this comment. It's very important. We, we support in the Safe Growth Movement, and I'm not, I'm using Safe Growth specifically over SEPTED because I can now consider neighborhood planning to be the key by which the first happens, not, not the other way around. I say in the Safe Growth Movement, we're strong believers in social programming and community building and, 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 and capacity building and all that great stuff, trauma-informed strategies. But we do not do it on a, on a citywide basis. We do not do that. We, we, the reason we say, I call it third generation SEPTED and secondary SEPTED there is because we say SEPTED's strength is it works in the neighborhoods at the street. Crime happens on the street. It happens in the corner, in, in the bodega. It happens in, in the apartment building. It happens in the schoolyard. That's where you need to tackle it. So we go there first and we apply the trauma strategies to that level within that neighborhood first and then go upwards, not the other way around. So it's the tree strategy. You don't have to get the branches. We dig at the roots. So that's the key. Now, so to your question, what does this look like in city? Well, I can give you the example of, of New York City. I know Baltimore and New York have a, have an antipathy between each other. I apologize for that. I'm just the messenger. I live in Denver right now too. I work covered with smoke from California, so thanks, California. But having said that, so, so New York hired us three years ago. And the mayor's office there has a violence program called the Mayor's Action Plan, something rather, it's an acronym of some kind, MAP or something. But essentially what it is, is the mayor's trying to collaborate the city, get the, get the departments to work together because of all this internecine bickering between different city departments. You know, things get duplicated and things don't get done. So he wanted to stop that. So about five, six, seven years ago, he got this group together, the Mayor's Action Plan, and they started focusing on the prison system, Rikers Island, and so forth. And then they started saying, well, we're getting them out of the prison, but they're going back to the same neighborhoods and they're learning the same things, the same dysfunction as, as they, you know, when they went there in the first place. So we're not addressing the deep root of problems. So what they did was they came to us and they said, how do you do neighborhood planning using Safe Growth? And our thing was target your 15 worst neighborhoods. And what they did was they went to the New York Housing Authority, the projects, right, which New York has hundreds and thousands and so forth. And they picked the 15 worst projects. They were in the Bronx and, and Queens and a couple up and, one up in Harlem and so forth. And we picked the 15 worst building sites, 15 worst crime, crime locations. And what we did was we trained the local organizations to go in there. So we did the initial training. So we were there for about a year, year and a half, but then we pulled out and they did their own training. So it was, it was capacity building. And they went into each of these department buildings and what they did was they got the residents, some of the informal leaders, of which there's always neighborhood informal leaders, always somewhere, usually the grandmothers, you know, not always, but often, the grandmothers who come down and work with the kids, work with the schools and so forth. And each project built their own, each, each area built their own project plan. And then, then, then what happened was the city said, okay, we can help you administer those plans. What do you need? Well, in this one, they needed some work with the Parks and Recreation Department because they wanted to unify this area to make it useful for kids. So the Parks and Rec Department went into that one. This one over here, they had hardcore drug dealers and some gang issues. So they needed the police. Police to do some enforcement, the police to go in there to help calm it down first before, before they could start to turn it around. Over this one, they had really poor education, so the, the school board came in, did some work there. So each neighborhood plan determined how they were going to implement, implement that. And what happened was the city, under this Mayor's Action Plan, they helped notify the departments to say, okay, let's map the city out by neighborhoods. Let's track each neighborhood's progress by evidence, by, you know, fear mapping, by crime stats and so forth. And we'll track this like a, kind of like, like a desktop for the whole city. And we'll direct resources according to that. And this was just in the 15 public housing sites. But that's a, that's an idea of how you could implement it in Baltimore. Hope that helps.
Yeah, it, it does. It also means that, you know, the, the city has to say, okay, we are going to do this in, you know, the first, second, and third generation way and put resources there and make a concerted investment. Let me just say, being, you know, how we've done work in Baltimore in the past, we would, we don't always invest in the worst neighborhoods. We mostly invest in the good ones and so, well, not always, the middle ones. And so this would be a complete change in thinking, which I think is probably a good thing. So I do appreciate that. And I wonder if, so it really was sort of, you know, let's do this and then work from the ground up to make it very community-focused and base and apply resources based on what the community is saying would help them with their safety, public safety plan. So thank, thank you. That's very helpful. I really appreciate it. And I hope, Mr. Chair, that we get a chance to maybe meet with the mayor's office on how to be able to, to make this a priority. In what I think the mayor is actually thinking about, he's been very much thinking about prevention. And I think it is this aligned. So I really appreciate, Mr. Chair, that you're bringing this up. Mr. Seville, thank you very much for being with us and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
You're welcome. One more point to what you're just saying, by the way, your comment about the costs and the cost benefits. And what I would, what I would, what I would ask you to do is, not you personally, but as a city, it's a big job. I would say, if you're worried about costs and benefits, take a look at the high, high-crime neighborhoods right now. Take a look at the crime hotspots and, and you're going to find that 10 or 20% of most of the crime, most of these areas in your city are generating 50, 60% of most of the crime. This is one of the contributions to the geography of crime, which is what I study, study. However, what we don't study when we do this is then take a look at those same neighborhoods and then add the social service costs and the city costs of the fire department who has to go there to deal with the arsonists, of the police department hours dealing with homicide shootings and court time with the social services, the, the alcohol, the abuse counseling, of the insurance costs for damaged properties. You add those costs up, they will far outweigh any kind of prevention strategies I'm talking about now. I assure you, that's going to happen.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. And if you could send us maybe what, some of the language that New York used or something like that, that would be really helpful, I think, too. But thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any other questions from the committee? I see a question from Councilman Burnett and then Councilman Glover there after.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I, am I coming through okay? Perfect. Okay. So the question I had, one, thank you for pulling this together. This is something that we've tried to implement in my office in my district as, as it relates to how we communicate with, you know, the police department, the BW, et cetera, knowing that environmental factors absolutely do contribute to crime and particularly crimes of opportunity. The question I had was for, first question I had was for the police department. What, what does the department do or encourage at the district level to proactively assist residents block level on crime? An example I would give is when there's a fatal fire, Baltimore City Fire Department will canvass and provide education to residents to try and prevent further fires. And I've been out with them a few times and it's been particularly helpful to my constituents for sure. Who may not even know that this is something we do or have a fire safety plan. Does the, the police department consider going beyond the, obviously, I'm aware of the commander meetings and the community relation councils. But is there thought been given to doing block-to-block canvassing to educate residents on ways to prevent crimes of opportunity like break-ins, robberies, that kind of thing? Is, is that something that's on the table in the department or being done at the district level already?
I don't know if Colonel Worley has any additional items to add during, from his experience as chief of patrol, but I know that every single district manager, district commander is interacting with residents around hotspots, their, their CSOs are interacting and engaging in problem-solving with, with residents. They, you know, meet with them to determine, you know, if there are things that need to be fixed. Is it, you know, vegetation that needs to be cut down? Is it lighting that needs to be fixed or improved or added? You know, there's one, you know, we're, we're working right now with, and I think this may be the project that has been alluded to, is we're working with other agencies because we have an area where there's a lot of crime going on because it's very difficult to get to that location. So the, the, the bad guys are kind of shielded. So we're looking and working to open up the, the street so that we can get access, so that they can't hide. But, but they're always looking at ways to problem-solve and, and reduce areas make areas not as attractive for criminal activity. I, I see the, the Colonel turned on his video. Colonel, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, we, we've actually done this for years and that the fact that it's usually done by our NCOs, but any officer can do it. Especially when they do foot in business areas, they'll go into businesses and they'll give them tips on how not to become a victim. Unfortunately, the tips don't always work because regardless of what people do, they're still, they, some businesses are still subject to getting robbed. But they'll tell, they'll give them examples like remove signage from in front of the windows. So officers going by can see inside the windows, make their windows as clear as possible. But one of the biggest things we do, and we probably don't do as good a job at this as we norm, as we, we should, is that we will do a security assessment at someone's house. All they have to do is ask for it. And then what the officer does is they will come out to your house. It'll be a neighborhood services officer. They'll walk around your house with you and tell you things that you can do environmentally around your house, like you might want to cut shrubs so that we have a better access to the back of your house or put a light here or a motion detector light here, lots of different things. But those are things we've done for years. We just don't do as good a job as we should of getting that. But those are things we've done for years, we just don't do as good a job as we should of getting that message out there. But we do, we do offer those services.
I want to, I want to stay cognizant of time, we've run over quite a bit on this hearing, but I think folks are finding the discussion really, really helpful. I want to give Councilman Glover an opportunity to ask a question. I asked you make that brief and then whoever, whoever responds, please make your response brief as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is kind of piggybacking off of what Councilman Burnett kind of said. It was, this question is for the HCD. How could the department work better with like Baltimore City Police Department, the liquor board, and the Health Department to help some of the businesses that are in the neighborhood? You know, allow them to have the opportunity to get rid of the large amount of participation that they got going in front of their stores, like the drug activities and things of that nature. How can you guys all work together? Because that's what I'm seeing a lot over here in my district is the corner stores are, are being bombarded with, you know, a lot of illegal activity that are going on. And I just want to know how can you guys all work together to like solve those issues?
Thank you, Councilman Glover, for that question. Actually, if Deputy Hessler is on, he can also say a couple words to this. But we are actually actively, just last week, had a meeting with members of the police department, DPW, liquor board, other, other agencies as well, specifically looking at businesses and businesses that have high levels of 311 calls, et cetera, and what can be done in terms of enforcement and working together as cross-agencies to tackle that and tackle those with going out on a weekly basis and kind of timing that. So we are actively in the process of pulling together that team. And Deputy Hessler and Deputy Booker are leads from our agency on that work as it relates to doing that. And we are in lockstep with our fellow sister agencies on doing that work currently.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other quick questions from the committee before we move on? Okay, seeing no questions, we're not going to vote this one out today. I think there's a lot more for us to discuss on this issue. And it sounds like a lot more for me to relearn. So I want to thank the agencies for giving us additional insight on what we've been doing already. And it sounds like we have some opportunities in front of us as well, both on the first generation side, but especially, I think, on that second generation and third generation side. I really want to thank you, Greg, Greg Seville, one, for initially bringing me to better understand this, this tool in approaching safety in our city. But then also helping us revisit it as the council and as a city. So we're going to go on a recess for two minutes before we jump into the, the next bill. So we'll return at 5:02.